Welcome, everyone, to the City of Daly City's Planning Commission Regular Meeting on the second Tuesday of each month, February 5th, 2019. Let us all stand for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, the administration of oath of office to our two new commissioners, Richard Crump and Gary Pacheco. So, do I pass that over to whom?
Oh, okay, well, who's listed on the agenda first?
First, Richard.
Oh, okay. So, we'll bring up Councilmember Pam D. Giovanni and Richard Crump.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Repeat after me. I
I, Richard Crump.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
I will support and defend
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose
Without any mental reservation nor purpose.
Of evasion
Of evasion.
And that I will, and faithfully
That I will, and faithfully
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Richard Crump.
Thank you.
Welcome back. This is a returning commissioner and who has served our city well for many, many years. So, I'm very humbled that he accepted to serve again with our commission. So, thank you all. And, Mr. Crump, would you like to say something, Commissioner?
It's good to be back, and I guess you're changing my seat.
Please say a few words.
Very simply, it's good to be back. I look forward to being able to do the city's business. And let's get Gary sworn in and started.
I see all your family and friends here. Gary, not too long ago, you did this for the Personnel Board.
Yes.
So, please raise your right hand.
Yes, ma'am.
I state your name
I, Gary B. Pacheco.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
To the allegiance to
To the allegiance of the Constitution of the United States.
To the allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But he wanted me to ensure your oath of office.
It's an honor, ma'am.
And I know you'll do a wonderful job for the City of Daly City in this seat. At this moment, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Here I am again. You know, it wasn't that long ago that I took the role for the Personnel Board, and I am very humbled to be selected to be on the Planning Commission. I'd like to thank Mayor Ray Buena de Torre for the honor. Thank you, Justin, for swearing me in. And thank you to all my family and friends that are here. It means a lot to me. So, I'm ready to get up there and do some work now. Thank you, ma'am.
Now, your official dispenser on here.
No turning back now?
No.
Turning back now.
Okay, Crump?
Here.
Pacheco?
Here.
Satori?
Here.
Prohanyu?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And the minutes, how will we do that? We need the approval of the minutes of September 4th, 2018, and minutes of the special meeting of November 15th, 2018. So, would we proceed with the motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, we will proceed with the public hearing. First on the agenda is the use permit for UPR 121813808 to convert a portion of an existing single-story commercial building at 75 Pueblo Street to include one 723-square-foot studio apartment with one parking space. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301-dash Minor Alteration-
Alteration.
This is what happens when you don't bring glasses-
[laughing]
... of existing public or private structures, APN 005-063-130. Our applicant today is, I don't want to mess her name up, Sirheir-
He is Suhil Shatara.
Thank you very much. Again, the location is that 75 Pueblo Street. Environmental, again, exempt. And our planner is Michael. Do you want to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
This is a, not really a new project. The Planning Commission and City Council approved this project in October of 2016. However, the approval expired. The zoning ordinance allows a one-year life for use permits, and if there's a building permit that's not pulled, then the approval expires. So, this is the exact same project that was approved then. Nonetheless, we will go through a short presentation and allow you to receive public testimony and deliberate on the item. The project's at the northeast corner of Pueblo Street and Geneva Avenue in the city's Bay Shore neighborhood. The proposal is to convert a portion of the building there into a 723-square-foot residential studio apartment. There would be a single parking space left in the area that was previously occupied, but I believe it was like a contractor-type use before. Use permit is required in the C1 light commercial zoning district because it's introducing a residential use on a commercially-owned property. This is a photo of the site. This is Geneva Avenue in the background and Pueblo Street in the foreground, of course. And this is the area where that would be converted to the residential unit. Again, the garage here would provide one parking space, and the studio apartment would be in the rear of this building. The building actually has frontage that has three commercial businesses along Geneva Avenue, and this is a street view of those businesses. Central premise, when the staff started talking to the applicant about this proposal is that they would need to sort of clean this frontage up. It was kind of just, yeah, the signs were not uniform-looking and different styles, and so applicants proposed to do that, as we'll see. The use that's adjacent to the proposed studio apartment, which is actually, which is located here, is primarily residential. This is all single-family detached homes. This is looking northward. The county line's not too far from here. This is a proposed site plan, and the commercial businesses that had mentioned previously are located here, and they have frontages on Geneva Avenue. And the existing shell of the 75 Pueblo Studio Apartment is located here. So, this is Pueblo Street and Geneva Avenue. This is the proposed floor plan, which is kind of hard to read, but the garage space would be located here. It meets the city's minimum garage dimension, and the studio apartment would be located here, the kitchen, bedroom. And the trash storage would be located outside and accessible behind a swinging gate here that fronts on Pueblo Street. Staffs added some conditions of approval related to the garage door opener. We're just on a general upgrade, new doors, new garage door. The signs on Geneva Avenue frontage need to be cleaned up and professionally designed. Yeah, just basically facade improvements. Anything else the Planning Commission might think is warranted also? So, this is the existing elevation, and the applicant's proposed to repaint the frontage and introduce decorative trim colors and replace the doors with new doors, new garage On the Geneva Avenue frontage, similar thing, more uniform color palette and clean up the signs that are there. The Planning Commission, in its deliberation, should discuss whether the studio apartment is warranted in this location, whether it makes sense to allow it there, and determine if there would be any sort of incompatibility with adjacent uses. Again, there's residential to the north, so adding a residential unit at this location, staff feels, is something that we could support, and for this reason, we're recommending approval. The project's exempt from CEQA, and we're recommending that the Planning Commission advance the project to the City Council for approval. If there's any questions, the staff can answer, as well as Mr. Shatara is here, the applicant can answer any questions the Planning Commission has.
Well, so, at this time, should we let the applicant speak, or do you want to open it up to first with questions for them?
We should discuss it.
Should we discuss it? Okay. So, should I open? Do you have any?
Your Honor, Madam Chairman, actually, the existing commercial building is, I would say, it will really bring about more opportunity, especially becomes a mixed use. So, I implore all those buildings that a similar situation wherein they can probably convert it to a mixed use, which eventually can use those people, that situation that is underutilized. This, to me, is one of the projects that I really support. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Crump?
No comment, no comment right now.
I agree. I think that it's nice to see not only the inside of the building being put to good use, and they are taking the time to get a permit. That's very important as well, to have it done right, as well as the outside, to make, to have that area look good. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea, too. So, do we want to proceed, or do we have any questions for the applicant, or do we want to proceed with the vote?
Do we have any cards?
Actually, Madam Chairman-
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a card.
You can announce it.
Is it for this one?
For those who wants to speak.
Oh, it's for three.
Yeah.
So, we only have one card, but it's for number three.
Actually, for those who wants to speak, you can get the card, cue card, and then submit it to the chairman.
Thank you, thank you.
And you may move to close the public hearing if you desire.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
Okay.
Just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
So, I think you got the wrong color scheme, and I apologize about that. So, I think the last time we went through this, I think we were keeping the same blue color and keeping the mural on the side of the building. And I think that's the way it got approved last time, but we were cleaning up all the signage and all the roof rack that is on the outside of the building. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that we have a little bit of flexibility possibly going back to that original scheme.
If I may, yeah, I was on the commission, as was Mr. Satori, when this came before us the last time, and we did approve it with the mural on the side of the building.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't see any question here, Madam Chairman, so it's just a motion really to get done.
Very good. Thank you for stepping up and letting us know that.
For all these, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, so, at this time, we'd like to close the public hearing, and Mr. Crump gave a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So, I'd like to recommend that the Planning Commission forward to the City Council the following recommendation.
We still have to have a public hearing.
This is for the third one, so we don't-
We don't have to.
For a different one, yeah. Different item.
It's much, there is no speaker, so let's go on. Sorry about that.
Yes, that's okay. Thank you, thank you for helping. And so, if I'm doing this right, we'd like to adopt the findings as outlined herein, and we did, did we do that motion? Yes, we did.
So moved.
Okay. And then, we recommend that the City Council affirm the-
We need to vote on that one.
On that one.
Yes.
Okay, so, let us vote on the recommendation that the City Council affirmed the environmental assessment
To adopt the findings.
To adopt the findings.
Number four, we have to vote on number four.
Oh, I thought we did that already. Okay.
No.
Well, let's do that first. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Let's, we'd like to vote on that.
So moved. Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. So, we did that, and now, we're moving to number five for the recommendation to the City Council to affirm the environmental assessment. Wait to vote on that one?
And.
And recommend that the City Council approve the use permit for UPR 121813808, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein. And the motion?
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we do a roll call?
Roll call.
Crump?
Yes.
Pacheco?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Prohanyu?
Here, yes. Okay, so, let's move forward to the second agenda item, if we may. The use permit, UPR 121813791, the sign program amendment, to amend the existing sign program for the DC Station Office Building located at 2001 Juniper Sarah Boulevard. And our staff member here, Brian Pallad, Assistant Planner, will he be stepping up?
My project is the next one.
I'm sorry?
My project is the next one.
Yes, that's fine. Madam Chair-
Hey, Michael? Yes, I'm following my paper, I'm lost. Michael, please proceed.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is a request by the DC Station owners to amend the existing sign program at 2001 Juniper Sarah Boulevard. The site is located in the Pacific Plaza Center. We're probably all familiar with it, in between the movie theater and the parking garage that exists to the south. The adjacent land uses, again, there's the parking structure to the south, the movie theater to the north, and this picture actually shows the building that's proposed for the sign program here with residential uses there off to the northwest. The proposal is to amend the existing sign program of the office building. There was a sign program that was established back in 2000 when the office theater were constructed, and essentially, the, since that time, the building owners, and there was a previous owner, received approvals from the city's Design Review Committee to add signs to the top of the parapet wall as needed. The applicant is proposing this amendment to formalize the sizing and design criteria for parapet signs as well as street signs, and we'll go through the exact items, as well as introduce, and this is probably the biggest change, introduce the ability for mid-height signs to be placed on the office building's exterior walls. We just provided some slides here that showed the existing office building, so this is the building that would be affected by the sign program. The parking structure to the south is not part of the sign program, so it's just this building. This is a nighttime view of the office building. This slide shows existing signs that are on the building. Again, these are the, what we call the parapet wall signs that have been approved over time at the top of the building. The blade signs at this location were approved by the city's Design Review Committee a few years back, as well as the monument sign that exists to the base of this building. So, the blade signs would be staying. This monument sign is proposed for replacement, and we'll go over what would replace it. These are street-level signs that would be staying, so these are already elements. This sign is an element of the sign that we would, that's included in the sign program, but it's already there. Just took this shot looking up to try and give the commission and public what these signs look like from the street. These are just more visuals of existing signs. So, the sign program, again, covers several different kinds of signs. These are the parapet wall signs, and these are the mid-building signs that are now, that are being introduced as part of this sign program. These are the existing blade signs, which would not change. These are the street-level signs, which would not change. They'd be very similar to ones that have already been installed. And then, the monument sign here at the project entry, and that would change. So, the existing monument sign would go away and be replaced by a new sign that has names of some of the building tenants. That's probably the biggest change associated with it. We'll take a look at what it looks like. So, that was the portion of the building facing the freeway. And these are the north and south elevations, which have existing, the south elevation, anyway, has existing parapet wall signs, and I think the north does, too, actually. So, these are the north and south, and they would have parapet wall signs. The proposed sign program, again, introduces wall signs at the building parapet and at the midpoint. There's a maximum size that's been established in the sign program. One of the topics that the city staff has discussed with the applicant is making sure that the size of these signs fits within the proportion, fits proportionally to the surface which it's mounted, which is something that the sign code strives to, the sign code strives to achieve. We don't want signs that look like they're too big, or just squished into space, or too close to other signs, and so, we've made sure that the sizing that is proposed and is reflected in the sign program meets that requirement. And these are the street-level signs, and they would be placed on prefabricated metal support structures, so to speak. There's two different types, some with freestanding letters and some that are on a prefabbed type of a panel. And there are examples of the sign that already exist today, and they're quite attractive, so we have no issue with those. These are the blade signs. Again, those have already been installed, and they're quite attractive. Those would not be changing, but they're incorporated in the sign program because they're already there. This is the proposed sign program, the sign, the monument sign. This would be at the entrance, near the steps to the front of the building, and again, would incorporate the names of some of the tenants inside the building in a common-colored background. Yeah, and this monument sign meets the typical sign height of six feet. That's in the zoning ordinance, and the city staff has no issue with it. This is the sign program, just showing the, from an aerial view where the signs would face, and you can see we're on the, probably most importantly, on the north and south walls. They would be located at the corners of the building. There are no signs, and it's a condition of approval, that no signs be facing east toward the residential or the park that's actually there. So, the bulk of the signs, again, face the freeway. Mid-building signs limited to, these are the conditions of approval. Mid-building signs would be limited to a single floor so that we don't see the mid-building on different floors, we just want them on one floor. Signs above the first floor, other than blade signs, would be halo-illuminated only. And just to show the Planning Commission what halo-illuminated means is, that's a sign that's only lit from the back, and light shines from the back and accentuates the cut-out metal letters of the front. So, that's what halo-illuminated means. So, everything above the first floor would be, again, halo-illuminated only, and that's consistent with what we see there today. Hanging characters, so that's, probably should have put in an example of that, but like the P in Chipotle has a P that hangs. The city staff would be authorized to approve hanging letters outside of the sign envelope, so long as they, again, fits within the character of the building. No signs facing east, that's a condition of approval. And then, again, wall signs have to be in visual harmony. These are truncated summaries of the conditions of approval. There's more verbiage associated with each of these, but that's just to communicate the main point. We want visual balance. We want to avoid crowded lettering in the sign program, and the applicant and the staff have worked together on the sign program to make sure that it meets the city's aesthetic goals, as well as the building owners need to add additional tenant signs at the property.
Mike, point of clarification here. On these signs, except for the monument, the monument, the, like company logo and company fonts and lettering will be only on the monument sign?
No, there are company logos that would be allowed on the signs above as well, and they exist there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and those don't necessarily have to be halo-illuminated, I should point out.
Right.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to achieve that with a company's logo, but letters have to be halo-illuminated. The Planning Commission, in its consideration of the sign program, should discuss whether the proposed sign program maintains the visual quality of the office building and determine if the program would not negatively impact adjacent uses. We've been particularly careful to make sure that none of the new signs would affect adjacent residential uses. Project is exempt from CEQA, and we're recommending the Planning Commission advance the proposed sign program to the City Council for approval. If there's any questions, we're here to answer them.
One moment. Before I proceed, I see a lot of people here and only two cards. So, yeah, so either you came to see us, or you want to speak. So, at this point, if we could have the cards come up to us at this point, please? If you haven't already completed a card, they're at the entrances there. There should be pencils. If there's no pencils, ask a neighbor. Thank you.
Yeah. And the topic was, the meeting just got long.
This must be the golf courses.
Yeah, number four. Number four. Ah, goody. And this is golf course two, number four. Yeah. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay, so, at this time, we'll open-
No, discussion.
Oh, sorry. First, we're going to have a discussion. Do you have any thoughts, sir?
No. Madam Chairman, I'm just interested to these signs because, you know- Madam Chairman, I'm just interested to these signs, because, you know, when I was still young, I'm very much interested with the themes of signs, especially the blinking. Will it be a lead, this light, that there will be lights on this, or just simple?
All of the proposed signs have lights. The monument sign, I'm not sure on that one. It probably would be internally illuminated or uplit.
It will be nice if it is, like, blinking one, that is, different kinds of color. It's nice, especially in the evening. I like it. So that's just my reaction, Your Honor.
Very good. Gary?
No.
Anything? Mr. Crump?
Nothing, Chair.
Okay, so with that, thank you very much for your input. I've been noticing personally the change. So we had a little sign here since the beginning, and it's, it's nice. It doesn't seem like it's in our faces, and it's all tastefully done. It currently looks nice. So, yeah. So at this time, now that we've all discussed it a bit, I'd like to open it up to the public hearing. I do, thank you, I do have one card from Ben Maxon. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ben Maxon. I work for Harvest Properties. We're actually the new owner of the building. Really like the property, and it's been a really fun project for us. Our main intent here is to bring a lot of new businesses into the city and give them a really tasteful way to display that they're headquartered here in Daly City. So appreciate you guys taking the time and reviewing this proposal, and we look forward to our continued effort in working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, so now we'd like to close the public hearing. I'd like a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you so much. Next, we'd like to recommend that the, recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendations to adopt and the findings as outlined herein, and so we'd like to have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We recommend that these, to recommend that the city council affirm the environmental assessments and recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR 121813791, signed program amendment, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein. A motion?
Roll call.
And a roll call. So.
So moved.
Okay. Very good. And with the second, may we have a roll call, please? Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Perwanyu?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, let us proceed with number three, which is.
Brian.
I'm sorry?
Brian.
Oh, hi, Brian. Oh, and your name's there, too. Okay, very good. Which one is that for?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So our third agenda item, he spoke, so we're good now.
Tatum for two.
Thank you.
Did you get that name for the record?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome, everyone. Today will be on our third item, is the zone tax amendment, ZC 091813672, excuse me, use permit UPR 81813628, and design review DR 31813329, to construct a revised street facade and three-story rear addition to an existing church located at 45 County Street. The addition would provide 3,632 net additional square feet for the purpose of providing additional office, classroom, and multipurpose space. The applicant has requested a zone tax amendment modifying the parking regulations pertaining to churches to allow the proposed expansion. And Brian Plod, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The third item before you this evening is a zoning text amendment and a use permit to allow, to allow an expansion at the Crossroads Church located at 45 County Street. The subject property is located on the east side of County Street between Valley Street and East Market Street. The applicant proposes to amend the parking requirement for churches to allow a, to allow a rear addition to an existing church at 45 County Street. The church currently operates at the subject site under a use permit and a design review approved in the year 2000. Currently, Sunday services are held at 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM with an attendance of 100 to 150 members, respectively. Additional weekly functions include a Wednesday evening prayer group, which has 30 to 40 members, and a Friday youth night, which has 40 to 50 youths. Here is a copy of the zoning text amendment that is proposed, and I'll talk about that a little bit, a little bit more, but I wanted to have a copy of the wording for it there The proposal involves retaining the 4,120-square-foot first-floor sanctuary and the demolition of the existing 2,109-square-foot second-floor mezzanine area, which consists of office and classroom space. A 4,080-square-foot addition would be constructed at the rear, containing two floors over the existing parking area. The net increase in area would be 1,971 square feet to include a multipurpose room, five classrooms, and two administrative offices. The applicant is requesting a zoning code amendment to exempt ancillary uses, such as classrooms, multipurpose rooms, and administrative offices, from the parking requirement for places of assembly. In this instance, the demand for parking based on the project as proposed would be 21 spaces. The plans provide for 23 spaces. Since the plans indicate angled parking stalls in the lot, staff is recommending a condition of approval, which would require a backup area at the southeast corner of the parking lot to facilitate cars being able to turn around before exiting the lot. The subject property is zoned BART multiple family, which allows churches subject to use permit approval. The proposed addition is a four-story building with corrugated metal panels, with metal trim elements at the windows, building corners, and floor plates. The building facade will be renovated with a new brick veneer and metal panels matching those on the addition. A new glass entry door, painted metal and glass canopy, and landscape elements are The site plan indicates onsite surface parking to the right and rear of the existing building. The addition is indicated at the rear of the lot, with the ground level to remain as surface parking. The ground floor indicates the existing sanctuary to remain, the open parking at the rear with the new addition over the parking spaces. The second floor of the addition consists of a multipurpose room, two classrooms, and a kitchen area. The third floor consists of three classrooms and two administrative offices. A roof deck for outdoor gatherings is proposed. The revised front facade features brick veneer and corrugated metal panel siding, a new glass entry door with metal and glass canopy, raised metal signage, and a prefinished corrugated The architectural elements used on the front facade will carry over to the new addition. And this is a side and rear perspective, showing the, the new addition and the, and the existing building. Both the addition and the zoning code amendment are categorically exempt from CEQA. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the city's general plan. The project is consistent with the BART multifamily zoning district regulations. Project is exempt from CEQA per section 15303 and 15305 of the CEQA guidelines. The proposed zone text amendment excludes non-congregational floor area, and therefore the proposed addition of a multipurpose room, office, and classroom space does not contribute significantly to the parking demand. Staff recommends that the planning commission forward the zone text amendment, ZC 9-18-13627, use permit UPR 81813628, and design review DR 81813629 to the city council for approval. This completes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just, just for clarification, Your Honor, as far as parking spaces concerned, are there about 24? Because there's, there's some people telling that some are parking in the Wendy's space.
So there.
Is the, the church here, the plan?
The representatives from the church are here. The plans as proposed are showing 23 onsite parking stalls. The use generated, assuming that the planning commission and the city council adopt the zoning text amendment, the proposal would generate a need for 21 spaces. 23 are being provided on the site. In addition, the church has a long-term, longstanding agreement with the adjacent or across-the-street dental office. When they hold their Sunday services and the dental office is closed, they use the dental office parking lot with the agreement with the dentist there.
Yeah.
And I, my understanding is they also have a, are providing a valet service to ease the parking.
Because they can probably make an arrangement with Wendy's, no, Wendy's, yeah?
It is Wendy's, Wendy's, but the dental office is right.
Across the street, yes.
So, just in case, you know, just, just formality, just tell them that during worship or during Sundays, because some of them are parking, I know, from the.
Parking at Wendy's.
Wendy's. That's it. That's my concern.
That's always.
As far as the building's concerned, I'm okay.
Yeah, good concern. Before we, before we ask the two, I have two cards for this. Did we want to let the, I see this, who's here from the church? Hello? On this side. Hi, is this all support? Okay, yeah, that's good, good to see, good to see. Do we have a representative from the church that wants to speak? That would be you. Come up.
Pastor.
Oh, pastor, pardon me. Pastor, what is your name, sir?
Good evening. This is, I'm Andy Antonor, pastor of Crossroads. And with regards to your concern, Commissioners, Satori, we actually addressed it many years ago with our congregants, telling them specifically not to park at Wendy's, although most of the business of Wendy's come from our people every Sunday morning. And so we were afforded, I have, we have an agreement with the owner of the parking lot right across the street, and so we've been using that for about 22 years now. And then we do business with Bank of America, so the manager of the Bank of America actually told us, we're closed on Sundays, so we have that.
That's why I'm encouraging you to enter the woods of bend with them, so, because you're also a client of them.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Nice. I just want to say how nice your church is going to be looking. I know you must be very excited to have, yeah, congratulations. The extra classroom space and such, it looks, it's going to look amazing, so congratulations.
It enhances the neighborhood.
Doesn't it? Doesn't it? It does. But before we begin, or we, we have a vote, I'd like to ask Mr. John Tam to step up.
She's the architect.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm the applicant architect of the project, and the one thing that I was asking to get approval for is that the condition of approval allows for a 12-month process for approving for, after the project's approved, till we start construction. Typically, at that time period, it gets a little tight, because it usually takes about four months for us to get the building documentation drawings to submit to the building permit process, and through, and then through, and then that will take an additional, up to three to six, you know, three to six months' time for approval usually, or can take up to that, that amount of time. And after that, it is when we go into a bidding process, and then therefore, once we get a contract signed, then we start construction. So the 12-month restrict, constriction seems a little tight for the, for the schedule for us, so we would like to.
Mike or Tatum?
Well, the city council can actually grant that at the time that the item goes before.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good, so.
If we can kind of, I would just want to see if we can put that as a, you know, tagged in on the, on the end, so that we can kind of have that placed in front of them before.
Tatum, Michael?
Well, the city council has the authority to grant extensions and can do that at the initial approval if it so desires.
Okay, very good. So your concern, you should be fine with that. Very good.
To clarify, the, the staff reports go with the, sort of the minutes of the meeting, so his request will be reflected in the staff report.
Very good, very good. So we won't worry about that. Nice. Okay, so Nikki Steady Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I stand here this evening representing the homeowners association of County Street. Pastor Andy and I know each other well. Over the years, we've experienced a few problems with the church. I myself am a very religious person. I belong to a church that supports the feeding program. We have homeless shelter. We have over 500 units of housing for low-income families in San Francisco. So I appreciate the work that the church is doing, and they're trying to enlarge and expand the Word of God by bringing more people. However, representing the homeowners as the property manager and also owning one of the units that's in the county condominium homeowners association, I've owned my home there now since 1989, and I've served as the property manager since 2000. Over the years, we've had problems, and it's grown as the membership has grown and expanded. We've had to bring the city in to help to get the church's attention. They had a blocked drainage in the parking lot that water was overflowing into our property, causing damage. I have photographs, if the commissioner would like to take a look at it. And we have a difficult time getting their attention to address these concerns of the homeowners. Also, nobody has mentioned it yet, but County Street is a one-block, one-way street. That's it. You have one way to enter, and Wendy's customers, they have one way, once they make their purchase at the drive-in window, they have one way to pull out, and they go down County Street. And it's a one-way going the opposite way. We, as homeowners, we feel as if sometimes we take our lives into our hands when we turn to go down our street, because people come up the one-way street all the time. Not the church members that I've seen, but there's great congestion that hasn't been mentioned here at all in the plans. mentioned here at all in the plans. That one-block, one-way street is very, very congested, especially on Sunday mornings. So they have church members out there, they're not identifiable, but I see them when I'm coming from church, directing traffic to make sure that there is a flow. But cars are parked on both sides. The members use the dental office parking, and they also park in front of our parking space. We have four buildings, and they're parking from that parking space also.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry, we're at the two, past the two-minute. So the point that we're understanding is that you're concerned about a blocked drainage, you're also concerned because the street county, which we're, I think all four of us are, I've been to Wendy's, so I do know the street. I usually go to the left. I don't know if that's wrong, but I usually go to the left. I don't go to the right. But anyway, but, yeah, it probably is. I'm probably going to get myself in trouble. They're going to look for me. Go down our street. Yeah, but, so I'm sure the blocked drainage would be something they would be taking care of once they start the building, correct?
Yes, we will take a look at the drainage pattern. The city's public works department will take a look at how the parking lot's draining and ensure that it's draining properly. If there's some sort of blocked drain, we'll discuss that with the applicant also.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, go ahead, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead. We had a city, his name escapes me now, yes, I have it here, Mr. Ward Donnelly is quite familiar, if he hasn't retired, he's quite familiar with the problems.
He's still there? I understand he's still there.
Good.
And so, I think it's important, it's nice too, that you came up and you gave your concerns, one, because you're part of the homeowners association, but also because it does affect you on a weekend. But what I was looking at, some of these note, some of what I'm seeing, it's not like they're enlarging the church. It's my understanding they're building classrooms, and they're building, you know, facilities. And so, in opposed to, let's just say, and it's my understanding, tell me if I'm wrong, if we were enlarging the church, let's say it was this size, and we enlarged it double, then we're expecting 200 more people to come to church, right? But I'm thinking it's more of a facility that they can use, the worshippers can use. I'm sure they would like more parishioners, but it's more to use than to bring in more parishioners. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's the primary reason the city staff supported this request, is that the uses that are contained within the proposed addition, and the city staff did propose a 2,500-square-foot limit, and this proposal would be within that, are sort of ancillary to the main function of the church gathering on Sunday.
And the other thing is, is you have a captive audience, since there's so many parishioners here, I think it's quite appropriate that you mentioned your concern with regards to parking and with regards to how people drive through there, especially on Sundays, to have a little concern for the neighborhood?
Yeah.
So I think that that, Mr. Crump?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it is incumbent on the church as good Christians not to park in your parking spaces. And I think that is something that you should have conversations with the pastor, and you guys work it out. Like you said, they've got Bank of America lot, they've got the dental lot, they don't need your few parking spaces.
And now that they're hearing it, and maybe, I mean, just, pastor, you heard it, might be in your next sermon?
Actually...
Find that out there. Yes.
Actually, I won't take up too much of your time.
No, ma'am.
And I thank you for hearing me out.
Absolutely.
But the problem that we've experienced since 2004...
I understand.
When we started contacting the pastor, we contacted the church administrator, Josie, we weren't getting, we don't communicate. We don't get response until Mr. Ward Donnelly, out of just courtesy, because the city had no real position. But out of courtesy and understanding what we as homeowners were going through, when I showed him the pictures, got involved, that's when we got the pastor's attention, then we got something going.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just afraid, I'm all for church expansion, believe me, I'm a strong practicing person of faith. All for church expansion, but also, as you said, Mr. Crump, Commissioner Crump, as a good Christian, to also pay attention to what your neighbors are saying and how your neighbors are being treated.
And I would just say is that, you know, it is something, I think extending what we've discussed here, is that, and we have the pastor and many of the parishioners here, is that we, how many spots are you parking? You said eight?
Oh, no, ma'am.
How many are your, these belong to?
We have four buildings, and there's four parking stalls in front of each building.
Correct. Okay, and so what I would just say is, so that we can proceed with the next issue, is that you speak again here with the pastor at, you know, a time that you two can sit down and discuss the parking spots. Now, I just have a quick question. Are these parking spots say public, or do they actually say private?
No, they're public. They're public, anybody can park there.
And that's our predicament, I would say.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, ma'am. Because when you're stating that they're yours, if they were yours, then it would say they belong to stall A or B. These are on the street, a public parking.
Yes, ma'am. But just, again, as a Christian, a brother and a sister in Christ, you understand.
Right, I do, I do.
And courtesy.
Yeah, but, exactly, so...
Yeah. Nice to see you, too, sir.
Every Sunday morning, most of the parking spaces on their side are occupied by the cars of the residents, because they're not working, so I am not aware of anything that happened in the past few years where our congregants would occupy the parking spaces, because the cars are already parked on Sunday morning.
They're already parked in the morning, yeah.
Knowing that they're not working.
That is, okay.
Thank you.
I understand as well.
There's congestion also, but I understand what the city is doing, and I understand you've made your decision already, but just know that there's a problem, and by increasing their area of worship, their area of school, that that creates more congestion for a one-block, one-way street.
We understand. No, we appreciate your time here, and hopefully you two can speak more. Thank you very much. Okay, so at this...
Are we done?
I think we are.
With the cards?
I think we are. We had two cards for this one, and thank you both for speaking. And so at this time, I'm...
Motion to close.
Absolutely. So do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second with Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'm totally been talking, okay. Okay, so, make sure I'm on the, we need to vote on this right about here.
Yep.
Now, that's the, okay, one moment, one moment, because we went so long. That's where we're at now.
No, 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 no.
We're right here.
We're right to number three.
I'm telling you, this has been a long one. On number three, we recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. And our motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommend that the city council affirm the environmental assessment and recommend that the city council approve zone text amendment, ZC 091813672, use permit UPR 81813628, and design review DR 31813629, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein. And our motion, and with a roll call?
So moved.
Great.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call. Thank you.
Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Proanu?
Yes. Okay, so at that...
Yes, sir.
Let me know when this will go to the council.
This will proceed to the city council on March 25th, I believe is the date, because it's, it needs to have time and place set.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. So at this time, we're looking at the fourth item, which is the use permit, UPR 121813790, to make minor modifications to the existing golf course located at 2300 Juniper Sarah, thank you for coming, Boulevard. The proposed modification consists of moving the course's existing driving range onto the part of the course presently occupied by the 10th hole, I'm sorry, that would be hole, on the property presently occupied by the driving range. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA guideline section 15201, minor alterations of existing public or private structures.
Minor altercation might be better.
No kidding. Okay, so at this time, I would look for you, sir, Michael, to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request by Lake Merced Golf Course to make modifications to the golf course. Specifically, what the planning commission is considering tonight is the relocation of the driving range and a proposed netting structure associated with that. As we'll review in the presentation, the bulk of what's proposed is actually not subject to a use permit, but when, in the interim district where this golf course is situated in the interim zoning district, any structure that you build essentially has to have a use permit. So again, the address here, 2300 Juniper Sarah Boulevard, we probably all know where the golf course is, adjacent to Interstate 280. It sits essentially surrounded by existing residential uses. There's a unit of Westlake here, Westlake Apartments are located to the west, there's an elementary school located along Park Plaza across the street from a very small portion of the course's southwest corner, another elementary school here, and a residential uses that are located in the unincorporated portion of San Mateo County, incorporated Daly City Broadmoor here. And those residential uses are directly adjacent to the proposed area of the driving range and the netting structure. These are some photographs. This is the unincorporated portion of San Mateo County in the upper photo, and this is Daly City residential zone located to the west of the project site. I believe this is Garden Lane. So the proposed modifications to the golf course are essentially five-part. We bolded the first because that's what the planning commission is actually acting on, and again, that's the relocation of the driving range into a part of the golf course that's presently occupied by the 10th hole. The 10th hole and the driving range will essentially switch places. The driving range is also proposed to receive a net structure that would range in between 50 and 135 feet in height, so a pretty tall structure, no doubt, and it's something that the city staff required, as we'll review in this presentation, photo sims be prepared so that we could show the public and the planning commission what that might look like. So there are other improvements, and we'll go through those briefly. They're not part of the use permit. There's addition of fairway bunkers to the course. These are all shown on the site plan that I will show you in a subsequent slide. Green improvements, back tea additions, there's some minor grading that would need to occur as a part of some of this, replacement of turf, yeah, replacement of sand on the bunkers, but yeah, minor grading that would essentially occur throughout the golf course itself, and those are outlined, and these are provided as attachment B, I believe, to the planning commission staff report. But it's this area at the southern portion of the golf course that is the purpose for the use permit before the planning commission tonight. And that's the driving range, again, the driving range location. This graphic doesn't show it, but the homes adjacent to the relocated driving range, again, located in unincorporated Daly City on Garden Lane, exists to the south of the project site, and this is the, essentially the location of the relocated driving range. I don't know what happened to my mouse pointer. Anyway, and this is the 10th hole, the new 10th hole location. I think my battery might have gone dead. Let me grab a keyboard.
Can we ask a question?
Not yet. We will, we will. We can't right now, but we will. Did you, sir, did you fill out a card?
No, I just have a question about the white lines.
Later.
Okay, we'll do it after.
Just finish the presentation.
Sorry, we're going to switch over to a different mechanism for switching between slides.
Do you have more cards?
Does anyone have a pen?
I have a pen. So, again, this relocated driving range includes the construction of a netting structure that, again, would range in between 50 and 135 feet in height. The net would essentially be on these tall poles that would hold the net itself, and of course, the purpose of that is to prevent errant driving, balls being driven in the driving range from entering adjacent properties to the south.
And I don't mean to be rude, but I'm going to ask a question. Are there existing netting now?
Yes.
That someone, we would already see if I went there.
Not at this location.
No, no, not at that location. I'm sorry, guys. I have to keep it, I was told I'm not supposed to talk yet, but currently, currently, there's netting on the location.
There, not at the, not at the...
Not at that specific location.
Specific location, but more to the north. I wish my pointer could show you where that is.
At the existing driving range. It's going down a hill.
It doesn't really work on screen.
But the net doesn't have to be that tall.
Got it, got it, got it. I'm sorry, we're, I'm not sure how I'm going to address this one, but we're going to give everybody time to speak. There's two minutes for everyone. We will listen to everyone. We'll stay till we listen, and then we can pass questions back and forth, so everybody will have a time, okay?
The presentation.
So go ahead, Michael, sorry.
So, yes, and I apologize for not having a pointer. I'd show you the existing location of the, of the existing driving range, which does have some netting, although, yes, this new proposal is in a different location and at a different height.
Okay, very good.
You know, it's a different thing altogether. I don't think that, yes, that's definitely true. So the image that is on the screen is actually the trajectory analysis, and this is a very, you know, expanded view of an analysis that shows the exact location of the poles and the heights that would be installed for those poles that would hold the nets. This is based on a computer model, a fairly sophisticated model that shows, based on the difference, the varying skill levels of golfers, the height of net that would be needed to contain golf balls. And the net grows from east to west, and it is its highest point in the center of the golf driving range, because that's where the most likely errant golf ball would leave the course as the golfer's ball hits its summit, so to speak, and then loses velocity, if you will. So, so the net is highest at its center point, and the planning commission cares to look at the exact detail of this. You can see the heights of the posts in this graphic, which is an attachment to the staff The arrows, the white arrows show where the photo sims were taken, and that's what those arrows are. So the qualities of the proposed netting structure. So poles would be installed at approximately 60-foot intervals. Again, they would range in height between 50 to 135 feet, depending on their proximity to the range entrance. Poles would be painted flat black and constructed of anti-corrosive metal. Of course, that's, you know, needed given the climate, and make sure that they weather well. They're varying diameters based on their heights, so of course, poles that are taller need to be thicker at their base, and item five kind of goes over that, and we won't get into too much detail, but basically, the tallest would be 24 inches in diameter at their base. Of course, the poles would require a building permit issued by the city's building division, and they would go through a rigorous plan check process to make sure that they're installed with a proper foundation and a base material to make sure that they're safe and are going to withstand the test of time in their lifespan. Netting would be constructed of three-quarter inch braided black polyester rope. I believe we have a sample of that rope here tonight. So those are the qualities... So those are the qualities of the netting structure. So these are some photo simulations of the netting structure. This is before, let's just go back to this real quick. This is A. I can't use this to point, but there's A that's looking to the northwest from the back of one of the homes. And this would be before, and then after, and this is a straight-on view. B is very similar, looking from one of the adjacent homes, straight-on view, before and after. The city staff felt it was important to show the entire scope of, you know, what, you know, how tall the nets might be, so we requested a photo sim looking at a different angle that would show the entirety of the height of the net. So this is that angle looking to the northeast from the back of one of the homes, and that's before and after. So that's what, that's what the adjacent neighbors could expect. It was important for the golf course and the city staff to communicate the scope of what was proposed and make sure that there was an understanding for the need for the net. The golf course is, of course, here to go into some more detail about why the nets' heights might be necessary. The golf course sees this installation as a safety measure. Of course, it's necessary because the driving range is moving or closer to the residential homes. But again, they do see it as a safety measure. And, yeah, so that's, that's essentially what we'd be looking at.
May I, so this view of C, where are the houses to that?
So C is at the lower, if you could see C.
Oh, there it is, C on the left.
Yeah. See how I was saying, how, we really wanted to, because if you just look straight out your backyard, you're just going to see net. But we wanted to give a perspective, and so angle, visual C was prepared at a sharp angle so that we could actually see the total height of the net. We thought that was important to communicate. So the Planning Commission knew, should it recommend approval of the proposal, and the public would know as well, what sort of a height we would be looking at with these sort of structures. So that is C there, looking from the lower left of this graphic. So those are, those are the three photo sims, the A, B, and then again, C before and C after. The city staff is proposing some conditions of approval related to this proposal. We want to make sure, we expect and understand that the project could evolve slightly, that poles may need to move as the analysis is refined for where they need to be. But we want to make sure that, because we're conducting a public hearing and inviting the public to take a look at what is proposed, that there's not a whole lot of movement in those poles. And so we wanted to add a condition of approval, that poles be installed at locations determinate as critical to ball, to ball safety. Should there be slight adjustments, then there may be, need to be adjustments to the pole locations, they have to be sort of immaterial deviations. So material deviations, we've communicated to the applicant, and the conditions of approval reflect, would require that the use permit would be, need to be resubmitted to the Planning Commission and City Council. So if there's some big change to what we're seeing, it will come back before you. We were concerned, the city staff was concerned, that the netting be maintained in good repair. We don't want to see a net that 15 years from now has got holes in it and in tatters, and it needs to be doing its job. And so that's a condition of approval. There was a concept, there is a concept by the course to, by the golf course itself, to reuse some of the poles that surround the existing driving range. Those poles are not black. And so if those are going to be used, they need to be repainted to the same black color, the same exact specification as the color of the new poles, because we want visual congruity between poles. We don't want a hodgepodge of color. And that, so that was something that was important to us as well. The San Francisco Public Utility Commission has made the city aware that there are existing water lines that do traverse the course. And so they have a process for reviewing the proposal that's internal to the SFPUC, and they've requested that this project be subject to that. The city staff has communicated, or will communicate, to the SFPUC that we intend to make that a condition of approval of the project. But we haven't worked out the exact details of that yet, but that's something that we're taking a look at. We just received that this afternoon, that communication from SFPUC. So those are the major conditions of approval that we have. The city staff has taken a look at CEQA as it relates to this proposal, and has determined that the Planning Commission and the City Council could find the proposal exempt from CEQA as an accessory structure. The other modifications in the course that were outlined in the presentation are not subject to the use permit. They're non-discretionary, and therefore, they're not subject to CEQA. And that's the moving of the bunkers and the items 2 through 5 in the previous list. The city staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward the project to the City Council for a recommendation of approval. The city staff is available to answer any questions the Planning Commissioners have, and the golf course representatives are also here tonight to answer any questions.
Let me ask my fellow people here. I feel like I'd like to hear, first of all, from the golf course to hear why they're doing this. And that way, we have a beginning. Would you guys agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, may I ask one question, Michael first, though? Michael, do we have a sample of the netting?
I believe we have a sample of the netting here tonight.
I think they're here, so they can
Yeah, they're here. So may I ask that you guys, who would like to be the representative to speak? Very good.
A sample of the netting?
Very good. We may need that in a minute. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
My name is Jeff Perrow. I'm the president of Lake Merced. And I think you've asked for a little bit of historical context and why we're proposing to do this. As I think you may be aware by reading the newspaper, a number of months ago, Lake Merced Golf Club was approached by the PGA Tour and Stephen Curry of the Golden State Warriors to ask if we would be willing to host a brand-new PGA Tour event at Lake Merced. This was a surprise to us, but we, we were pleased by it because it would have promoted not only Lake Merced as an important golf destination, but it would have been beneficial for the surrounding communities. The golf tournament would have been covered on television for four consecutive days, three hours a day, carried around the world. We expected to have at least 7,000 visitors to the course each one of the days that the tournament was held. That was four days. And there would be one day preceding the four-day tournament in which we would have a pro-am, in which people like Stephen Curry and the Golden State Warriors would be playing. And we anticipated that that would bring a lot of people to Daly City just to see famous basketball players play on our golf course. So we thought it was a great benefit both to the course, to the city of Daly City, and we had hoped to surrounding property owners as well, since the golf course would be elevated in the minds of almost everybody as one of the best golf courses in the country. There was a catch, however. The PGA Tour golfers, not to anybody's surprise, hit the ball farther and higher than the average golfer at our golf club. So there was a condition imposed on the willingness of the PGA Tour and Stephen Curry to hold the tournament at our club, and that was that we increased the length of our driving range. The only way we effectively could do that was to move it from where it currently is to a spot just to the left of where it currently is. And that's the location that is subject to the meeting this evening. We drew up plans for that, but before we could come to the Planning Commission and the City Council, the money sponsor for the PGA tournament couldn't reach agreement with the tournament, and therefore, it was canceled for this year. So there was no need to proceed with any of this to get the tournament at the club this year. One of the benefits of the entire tournament was that most of the cost of moving the driving range is going to be paid for by the sponsors of the tournament. Once they've left, we were left with a golf course that we, as members, are satisfied with, but is simply not ready to attract a PGA Tour event that we think has great benefit for the community. So the reason we have decided to proceed with this change is to make our golf course what I would call PGA Tour-ready. That is a course that the PGA Tour could return to without having to pay for it, since the members would finance this themselves. And we thought that by doing that, we would not only benefit the golf club itself, but also the surrounding community by making it much more attractive for a major national and international exposure that comes from this kind of an event. So that's the reason for the proposal.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
If I may, let me play devil's advocate for just one moment here. Suppose after two years, the PGA says, "Thank you very much, Lake Merced. We've enjoyed being here, but we're moving to Omaha." Unfortunately, then, the neighbors are left with a 135-foot fence in perpetuity. There is no assurance that they're going to come here. No, 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 I want to hear his response.
You're right. There's never an assurance that they will return or that they'll come in the first place. We got some warm and fuzzy feelings that, in fact, they were interested in coming back. Their interest is in having a golf tournament in the San Francisco Bay Area and not in Omaha. They view this as an important part of the PGA Tour that is not served because there is no tournament here. So the theory was that they would come repeatedly to Lake Merced, maybe not, the theory was two years here, perhaps two years at another location, two years back to Lake Merced. There is no guarantee that that will happen, but we have been told by the PGA Tour that that was the desired intent.
I mean, I'd love to have the business come, you know, under circumstances. Could you, with that netting?
Yes.
Could you just kind of spread a piece out so we can see what it would look like when it was up and behind these people's houses?
And how, can someone else help him hold it? Thank you, Luis, or Michael? Yeah. Thank you, Luis. So how close is this, how many feet away from people's backyard?
The property line?
Yes.
It is, it's between 15 yards at the closest point and 40 yards at the most distant point, most distant point from the property line.
Okay, thank you. One other question. This poses no hazards to birds?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We have a lot of birds flying around.
Well, no, because you see, you see all the time, birds caught in netting, you know.
We've never had, we do have netting like this on the course already, and we've never had a bird issue.
Okay, good enough. Perfect. Thank you.
With regard to the impacts to birds, the general plan does not designate the golf course as any known aviary flyway. So it was something that we did look at.
I didn't even know we looked at that, Michael.
We did.
With regards to, I think it was your question, though, how, how far at the closest point is this from somebody's backyard fence?
So he did say
15 yards is what I heard, 45 feet, roughly.
And how high is this, that point?
The, the posts would range 50 to 135 feet in the air from
So is it the 50 feet or the 135?
Well, it depends.
Because it slides along there. There is a differential.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I can address that. The 15-foot distance, I'm sorry, 15-yard distance is where the shortest poles are. The 40-foot, or 40, sorry, 40-yard distance is where
Can you put this?
Thank you.
Right. So the taller poles would be like where the B arrow is, roughly. I believe that's where the tallest posts are.
So could you, again, place the photo showing, not to scare us all with the largest one, because that's at the highest point, but somehow, so we could, like, that's the height, so that's where he, you're saying, Mr. Perrow, this is where the highest point is?
No, it's not, actually. This is, this is not entirely accurate.
Okay.
Because the poles at the back of the driving range, which is what you see here, are quite a bit lower.
Okay. Very good.
It just overstates the height rather dramatically.
Okay, very good.
It's a Much lower.
Very good. And Michael, you were going to explain that?
Well, I was going to say that I think that it's sort of a visual, I don't know, illusion is not the right word, but the posts at the, at this end of the range are actually shorter, whereas the posts that are on the right side of the picture are actually the tallest in the center of the range, because that's where they need to be the tallest to capture a ball. And now, as the ball loses its trajectory and its power, there's just no need for height at this
Right. This is caught in perspective, too.
Right. We actually have, if the commission would like to see the detailed trajectory, we actually showed it in, as a slide, but we actually have the file, although I don't know with this mouse, we may not be able to bring that up.
The only reason I'm asking that question is if I was one of the residents and I saw that, that would, might concern me, but you're, I'm understanding that it's not this height and this position.
Well, this is what it would look like. But what we're saying is that these aren't the tallest posts. The, in a way, in a way, you can use whatever word, worst or whatever, the posts are taller, though, in the center visually. So if you were to move this visual simulation further to the east, the posts would look taller toward the center. I believe that that's true.
Okay, so
How many feet is that? How tall?
At this exact location?
78, 78 feet?
I'm not exactly sure. But the tallest post at the center, we do know that to be 135 feet. And at, and at the more eastern end would be the 50-foot-tall posts.
Running off the trees, we're talking about, about 70?
No, I do not believe these are 50 feet. These would be taller, I believe.
Most of these homes are single-story or
They're two-story.
They're two-story. And how many feet, aren't they, yeah, that's what I thought, single-story. So, single-story, we're talking 10 feet? Or what is that, 12 feet?
One story is 12 feet.
12 feet, yeah, with the roof. Okay, so 12 feet.
The height of this nine, they're both 40 feet, 12,000 feet to Lake Merced.
So, so, okay, so then the next question I have is, currently, there is netting, but it's, it's farther away. How far, how far are they moving?
It's perfect where it is.
I'm going to, the golf course people might know the answer to that. I wouldn't want to guess at that.
Can we, Jeff, or if you want to, Mr. Perrow, or if you'd like to have a representative? So currently, where they're at now, to where they want to be moved, how, how many feet is that?
155 feet. It's roughly 50 yards. So we're moving this roughly 50 yards.
150 feet.
150 feet.
150, yeah.
So, we're not going to get far. We're going to be here till midnight.
No, we aren't.
No, no, I'd like to go home. No, so, so, so I'm understanding 50 yards difference, correct? 150 feet. Okay, very good. Okay, now that we've heard that, I'd like to call up the first person, please, Pamela Ivani, 110 Gordon Lane.
Gordon Lane.
Gordon Lane, sorry. It looked like a no. Sorry. Hi, how are you? Okay, I'll put him back here.
I know Gordon Lane. This man.
So if I was looking for Gordon Lane, I'd never find it, is that's what I understand? Okay. Thank you, Pamela.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Pamela Ivani. I know a lot of the people here. I've lived on Garden Lane for probably 52 years. I've lived on Gordon Lane for probably 52 years. We've had our home, we've done a lot of improvements. We don't want to look at our window and see a black net, to be perfectly honest. I'm all for Steph Curry, I'm all for business in Daly City. I think it would really bring our property values down, for one. I think it's a safety hazard. We have children walking down our street going to Garden Village. Who's to say that a ball's not going to go over? I don't understand how, just because they want to have a PGA tournament, that they've got to put a netting on a whole block of Gordon Lane. I just don't understand their reasoning on that. Why can't they move it to another area of their prestigious golf course? They have a wonderful golf course, but why do they have to do this on the backs of the homeowners that have been paying property tax and improving our property? I just want to voice my objection to this and stand in solidarity with my neighbors. Thank you.
Before I call up the next person, I understand it's up to two minutes, right? The buzzer will go off and then so that everyone has a chance to speak, just keep that in your mind, if someone's already said what you've already wanted to say, try to think of your other point that you want to make so we get everybody to speak. Our next person, okay, Julian Anana Kobol Meyer. Mayor, sir, welcome. And you're, pardon me, you're at 205 Gordon Lane?
Gordon Lane, yes. I'd like to see that picture with the poles again, if I may.
We actually can't bring it up.
So the pictures that we were looking at?
Yes.
That one road, that's the utility road, am I correct, that goes along the homes?
Uh, that is correct. Okay, good.
And from there on, it's supposed to be like 15 yards to the, where the poles are going to be?
It's not, he said it was, uh, fif, well, 15 yards depending, right? It's depending, but most of it's going to be 50 yards. Is that correct?
It ranges from 15.
15 to 50. I'm sorry?
15 to 40.
Depending on where the properties are, 15 to 40.
Well, my concern is just like, you know, like all the homeowners, like, when they look out their windows, alls they're going to see is these big giant poles with a fishnet. It's going to look like big crab net. What does that do to our properties, you know? And which way are they going to be hitting the balls? Are they going to be hitting them west?
You know, I don't know, but can I ask a question? Because I don't know the back, I know kind of the front of your houses, but how large are your yards?
It's about, about 45, I mean.
Like, from the back?
East to west, yes.
Well, not the width, but, you know, towards the golf course.
North-south.
Yeah, north-south. So if your, your house is here and your yard's here and the golf course is here, how large is your yard?
Yes.
35, 40, almost all of them are 35, 40 feet?
Somewhere 45.
We're running out of time.
You share your back fence with the golf course?
We have a 100-feet sheer fence with the golf course.
And we all oppose as well. We support the rest of the.
I think, I think it would look a lot better that the driving range was either on Possetta or Junipicera, or it wouldn't bother anybody's views. That's a perfect spot. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Our next person is at 17 Gordon Lane, Chris Schinder, Schneider, sorry, sir, welcome.
Well, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Schneider. My wife and I are new to the neighborhood. We love our neighbors and we love our new home. We looked all over Daly City to find the right house and for us and our two young sons, for a place for us to build our lives. We put everything on the line financially for, and found our dream home at 17 Gordon Lane. One of the reasons why we loved the house so much was the backyard, where we could watch our sons run around and play soccer, have backyard barbecues and host birthday parties. Now with these plans, we're a little worried that our sons are going to be running around in the shadow of this net, the constant shadow. Our barbecues are going to be accompanied by the constant ping of golf balls being hit And we also are worried that our outdoor birthday parties will maybe occasionally get a stray golf ball into them. And then if that happens, you know, we're not going to feel safe to have our son's young friends over, with the potential for golf balls to be coming in. We're also not worried about the small daily annoyances, we're also worried about the big problems. You know, there's power lines right at the back of our fence. If these poles were to fall into our house or onto some of those power lines, that could be, bring a lot of danger to us and our family and our house. And we're just hardworking, honest people who love that we've made a life in Daly City. And we're really hoping that our, we're treated fairly and that our interests are looked after by our elected officials.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Michael, quick question.
Yes.
Are the power lines there now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
What he's saying is if the poles aren't properly done, if they fall over.
No, I understand.
And I'm sure that would be looked at. Okay, thank you, sir, for coming up. Bernard Duffy, 8 Gordon Lane, please.
So if you guys are familiar with, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
If you are familiar with Harding Park Golf Course, the poles just came down two weeks ago. So the storm blew the poles down. Harding Park's driving range is near no homes. Olympic Club's driving range, near no homes. Presidio's driving range, near no homes. They all have poles, but they're not near any homes. Peacock Gap, it's in the middle of the golf course, just like Lake Merced's is right now. It's in the middle of their golf course. Mr. Perro stated that they want to move it to the 10th fairway to make it longer. My familiarity with the course would say that they have room to move the present tees back towards the clubhouse about 50 yards and make the present driving range longer to fit the needs of Tiger Woods. But my main concern is looking at the net and the poles. I live on 8, so I look across towards the golf course. And the poles having the ability to come down and knock the power lines down. Like I've said, Harding's just came down. Anybody here remembers the driving range at Mission Bay? The poles came down. So there is that possibility of danger. The other thing that bothers me is by moving the drain, the, first of all, this states they want to move it 100 feet south. Now, we just found out that from the present line to the borderline of the homes is 285 feet. My neighbor Finbar measured it, I measured it, so if they, okay, two minutes. I oppose relocating the driving range, along with probably everybody here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm running some notes down. Okay, thank you. Our next person's at 127 Gordon Lane, Carol Angelico. Carol, welcome.
Hi, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
I have lived on the ninth hole of the Lake Merced Golf Course for about 40 years now. There have been several things that the golf course has done to the homeowners there that I thought was really unjustified a few years ago because they wanted a straight fence. They blocked me from getting to the backside of my home. So if I want to wash my back windows, I have to either call the golf course and ask them to let me in, or I have to go through a window in my bedroom. They also left an unsightly stump outside of the thing, of a beautiful 100-plus-year-old cypress tree that could have been centered out and left there, but they left about a, I don't know, probably a 12-foot hunk of wood outside. Now we get this, and I look at this and I think, like Mr. Duffy said, there are so many places and ways to do a driving range on this golf course that doesn't affect the one row of private homes and the people across the street. I have, I'm imploring this panel to listen to us and to let our voices be heard, not Steph Curry's, not somebody else's, because we are more important. We add more to Daly City than anybody who's going to come and play golf at your golf course, by far. We're there every day, every day. So I hope that our voice means more to you, Mr. Perro, than a Steph Curry or somebody that, I want, I want your golf course to be successful. I love living on the golf course. I think it's beautiful. I think there's always been plus. But as you make your improvements, I think our voice and these people here should mean way more to you than anything else that you could do on that golf course.
Miss Angelico, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I have three seconds.
I know, but I needed you to be addressing us, I'm sorry.
But I want, well, I want you to hear our voice as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want it to be like, he is saying that he is putting it through as an approval. He's already approved these. I want our voice to mean something to you.
It does, it does mean, first of all, it's, it's the planning commission, they move forward, it comes to us, it comes to the council, so.
Right, so I want our voices to have some weight and mean something, not just like, okay, let them come and vent because it's already a done deal.
And please speak to us.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, but I also want Mr. Perro to hear that we are more valuable to Daly City than Steph Curry.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, our next person's at 1.
Madam Chair, before we go.
Yes.
Let me tell the audience here that they're just performing their duty, Mike and Tatum, they're just reporting to us whatever is for the recommendation. He is not here to implore us to approve this, no. We are here to listen to everybody, whether it's right or left, north or south, we would listen. But we presume that everybody has the right to speak. This is a free country, actually, so you can speak. But never, never tell that he's already approving it, no. Nobody's approving it yet. Because as a planning commission, we are just judicial, we are just based on a recommendatory to the council. Eventually, it's the city council that will approve this. We can approve this, but the city council can always reverse this, or we can, we can disapprove this, but the city council can approve it. So this is a dialogue that can run, but do not say that we are, we are for this or not. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to invite 104 Gordon Lane, Dennis.
Chui.
Chui, sir, welcome.
Hi, I'm going to be, go real fast. First of all, I live across the street, on the other side of the street from the golf course. I've been, my truck's been hit three times by golf balls, have them in our front yard quite often. And this is without any of the driving range, which will just increase it dramatically. If you've ever gone to a driving range, there's a big, a lot of lighting, like the ones downtown or the places. These would be in people's backyards, these lights. It'd be like a prison break every night, okay? Is there alcohol going to be served? Are we going to have to deal with guys yelling and screaming, you know, at the driving range after hours? Okay, and this is a, there's a, as far as the PGA, there's no PGA event that's held there every year. And it is of no benefit to us in the neighborhood. There's nowhere to park, people park in your driveways. I'm not making a penny off any of that. I'm sure Daly City might get some tax benefits out of it, but the neighborhood itself to come in and say that we're going to benefit from a PGA event, we don't benefit at all. It's a, it's a big detriment to us. Finally, like I said, this is a neighborhood issue with us. Okay, so all of this stuff, if it benefits Daly City, fine, but it's not benefiting us at all. And these power lines that they're talking about, I'm an electrician, Finbar's an electrician, these aren't just your regular 110 running down the street. These are PG knee lines, 12,000 volts. If you want one of those poles to fall over, and to paraphrase him, to have another paradise on your hands, you're just inviting it with this kind of stuff. Blindfolds ever pose.
At this time, I invite Jeff Orlich, 130 Gordon Lane, sir. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Jeff Orlich.
Orlich.
30 Gordon Lane. I lived there all my life. My dad was a basketball coach at Jeff for all my life. I bored on that street. Hello? I don't want to look, coming out my front door and look like this. For Steph Curry to come here and play for four days, that's completely wrong. I don't know what you people are looking at. You got to be blind or you got to be on the take. I hate to say it, but this is a joke. I mean, if, if anything, build it on their ninth hole, whether it goes down Junipicera or on the freeway, so nobody sees it. This is a nightmare. Even if, even if you came to the Jade Dragon or the IHOP, you're going to see this 100, a telephone pole is 60 feet high. 60 feet high. 135 feet? What's next, airport or landing pad? It's a joke. The only thing is, the rich people are going to shit on the middle class, and that's, that's disrespectful. I can't see you approving this. I don't, and even if the tournaments come, it doesn't benefit us. They don't pay for my, all the parking in front of my house and all the litter. It's once Lake Merced come here and have to pick up all the litter, would all these people come? I love the tournaments, it's great for the Daly City, but we don't benefit. So, you know, if Donald Trump can't get a wall, don't build the wall.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Ronnie Gu, 112 Gordon Lane. Ronnie?
Hello, Commissioner. I'm basically here to stand in solidarity with my neighbors. They, I've, I've played golf on this course. The current driving range affects the neighborhood, the impact is minimized. What they're proposing runs right next to all the backyards of the, and you're just asking for catastrophe. And I, you can engineer these poles to be the best poles ever, you can't engineer for wind events. Like, like Bernard said, Harding Park's nets came down. Mission Hills, the nets came down. It's wind that brings these nets down. And now you're talking about lining 135-foot poles down all of these residential homes. That is insane. So, I mean, just take everything into consideration, not just dollar figures, just not just increased revenue to the city. I mean, so they're going to eat pizza in Daly City? There's no place to stay. We don't even have a decent hotel in this town. So the neighborhood is only impacted, they're not benefiting from it. So thank you for your time.
I am so sorry, but I should have asked everybody to print. Finbar Errit.
Daly.
Daly. Thank you so much. And what is your address, sir?
Gordon Lane.
Which number?
19.
19, very good. Thank you.
We've lived in our home for 14 years, and in the last four or five years, there's been some great tournaments in her, in the Merced course. Last, we have to listen to the generator like 30 feet from our bedroom, four days in a row. We go, we ask them, hey, guys, good neighbors, the last tournament, I had to beg them to turn the generator, and we had to turn it into these people's home at the time because they, it was vacant, so that the exhaust noise was not. they, it was vacant, so that the exhaust noise was not bombarding us for four days. Now, we have to put up with this 135-foot wall, you know, 40, 50 feet from our backyard window. And, you know, the home value's number one, and then PGNE, it's 12,000-volt line, right? This thing is going to be where if it should fall over, not only will it fall in the line, but it will hit homes. You know, the man has not made anything strong enough that the wind can knock down yet. No matter what engineering, you're talking about reusing the poles? You mean they've been there for what, 30, 40 years? Have you taken that into consideration? They're probably old and rusty, like the ones in Harding, Mission Bay, and several other places that have fallen down over the years. Nobody has, you know, built anything that the wind can bring down. And you're talking about a thousand-foot-long, 135-foot sail. You know, it's going to come over, it's only a matter of time when. Is the knitting, is it fireproof? Because lightning, 135-foot, is going to be the biggest lightning conductor in the area. Then if it does hit the power lines, does it catch fire? Then what do we have? Paradise, the whole street goes up in one wish? Just please keep that in consideration. We've got kids, old people, and stuff does happen.
And the 70,000 people that might come and visit, they might come for a week. We live there a lifetime. This is where we sleep, this is where we eat, this is where we raise our families. So we want you to take it into consideration. Goal for most people is an activity of leisure. For us, that's our homes, that's our life.
Okay, I'd like to invite Art, oh, I'm so sorry if I hurt your name, okay? Art Woodfelt? Woodfelt?
Woodfelt.
And that's 107 Garden Lane, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Well, I have actually enjoyed hearing what my neighbors have to say. This has been one of the best events to hear the reactions of my neighbors, and I basically, they've each one articulated my thoughts, and so I would like to just allow time for them to continue, and to continue to hear what others have to say, because I would simply be adding to what they have to say. And I also would have to suggest that I do enjoy the golf course view, seeing it. I've been a neighbor of the golf course for all my life, basically, and we've had good relationships with the club, but I am very concerned about what my neighbors feel, their safety considerations that I've been hearing, things that I had not been able to consider, you know, the electrical impact and that kind of thing. I certainly wish the club every success. I do believe that it's in our best interest that the club succeed, but I certainly would want to look at other options besides what is here presented. But, so I want to thank my neighbors for what they've had to say, and I'll stop now and let them continue.
I think you already did. I think I saw that. So Ronnie, I've received two cards. Ronnie Gu? I'm sorry, he left already, okay. He had two cards, I want to make sure he knew. Okay, can I have, I'd like to invite Luis Pies for Sullivan Avenue? Broadmore.
Yeah.
Welcome, sir. Good evening.
My family and I have lived at Fort Sullivan for almost 20 years, and it's been in our wife's family for probably 50 years. First of all, I'd like to say that the presentation that was shown was factually incorrect. I want to point that out because it was, showed a fancy visual of what these poles would look like, and admittedly, it's not correct. So first of all, you shouldn't show a presentation that's factually incorrect when trying to sell a project such as this, right? With so much impact. I would like to have seen a sample of a two-foot diameter corroded pole that you'd bring in here to show us, because if they're going to use old poles, first of all, they should be certified by structural engineer to be sound and free of any defects. There's, you know, I'm a construction manager for 30 years in the Bay Area, and there's a lot of due diligence that has to be done on projects like this. But moving beyond that, I think the main point is being so close to homes and the danger that these present in wind events. I just can't tell you the danger that, or the risk to the neighborhood. I built Palaga Playground in San Francisco for Park, Wreckin' Park, and it's a very windy neighborhood, and they put up a 100-foot-tall spinning stainless steel art sculpture. This thing was designed meticulously. It lasted two weeks before the wind brought it down. Our commission took it down, sent it back out to reinforce it stronger than ever, put it back up, it lasted a month, and it's gone. Wind is unpredictable. You get wind events that can come in and tear things down, so it's significantly, very bad. Bad for the property values. And again, I question why the golf course can now have these, what is it, skirt competition every year? Isn't that a professional golf tournament? But somehow the drive, the driving range is insufficient for...
It's a women's, it's a swinging skirts.
Swinging skirts, okay, so they don't hit as far? Is that it?
I don't play golf, so I...
Is that the inference?
That could be it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, your time's up.
So, again, I just, you know, strongly object to this with all my neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Wouldn't be surprised to see that there's some litigation after this, if you approve it, so I don't think everybody's coming out clean from this if it just goes forward.
Michael Manning, and I'm sorry, what ad...
27 Garden Lane.
Did we just speak?
No, not yet.
Oh, no, you haven't spoken yet, I've just watched you go backwards.
On that, I can keep speaking up. I had no intention of speaking when I came here until I saw the photographs. The photographs are not only inaccurate, they're intentionally inaccurate. If I could approach here, what, in your own words, it'll be highest in sort of the center because of the arch of the ball, that is the center right here, right? It's going to be hitting off here. So the 15 to 45-feet range, by the way, I called last week, he said the net would be 50 yards away from my property. This is the property lot, 15 to 45 feet, that's where the highest net is going to be, not down there. Those giant poles that they showed us that look down here, that's where they're going to be, 15, 20 feet off of our property lot. And about a year and a half ago, there was a massive, there was a massive storm, and they had these big, giant, beautiful trees where the current driving range is. One of them came down, right smackdown on the net, pulled the pole down about 45 degrees. It stayed there for at least eight months. It was not fixed for eight months. So everyone's saying we can't predict the wind. We sure can predict the wind because we've seen it. The poles will come down because they have come down. Why it wasn't fixed for six months? I don't know. It costs, what, $300,000 to be a member of this place? They can't afford to put up a new pole and fix it? But if that comes down in my backyard, my four-year-old and two-year-old are going to have a pole hanging above their yard. It's just, or maybe come down on it. It's just unacceptable. And what makes me so furious about it is the photographs are intentionally misleading, are intentionally, if they, if, I'm sorry, if it was like the photograph and big and tall on the one end, it would still be terrible. But it's not sloping down the way the photograph is. It's exactly the opposite. It's highest at its closest point. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next, I'd like to invite Alma Alejandrino, 111, I see three ones, Garden Lane.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I actually, this is my husband Alvin and my daughter Samantha. We moved to Garden Lane about 11 years ago. We fell in love with the property, loved the Broadmore area, loved our neighbors, and my daughter does go to school here and by there. And aside from all the aesthetics that everybody is looking at, I'm now concerned as a mom for my eight-year-old for her safety. If this net is 50 to 150 feet, only God can tell how long those golf ball balls are going to go through. We bought that house because I pictured my eight-year-old daughter and her eight cousins around the area. Our neighborhood is a big backyard, it looks like a park, a small park, and so I feel very safe for her to just go run around there by herself with her cousins, but now that that net is going to be built up there, I don't feel that safety anymore, especially with now my neighbors stating that this pole could come down any minute in a sight of any type of weather condition. What kind of a mom would I be if I wasn't concerned of my child's safety? Don't get me wrong, I love Stephen Curry. If you guys could see...
I do too.
We love Stephen Curry. We love the Golden State Warriors' art flag. We have a Golden State Warrior flag, so we totally support that.
That came down from the wind.
And it came down from the wind, by the way. But what I am talking about more is safety. I'm concerned about aesthetics, I am concerned about that. My most important thing is my eight-year-old that's standing in front of me. I want her to be standing in front of me. And I just leave you one final thought, Madam, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Why fix what is not broken?
I'm looking to invite Paul Menecucci from 77 Fairway Drive, please. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to represent the people on my block of Fairway Drive. I don't see a lot of us in attendance here this evening, but there's actually an issue that I haven't heard much here this evening, and that has to do with the imminent danger and life and property potential damage of the existing aging Monterey Pine trees that are in existence along the entire perimeter of the golf course. These trees are approximately 80, 90 years old, reaching the end of their lifespan during the last storms. Looking out the window, I've seen 20, 30-foot limbs falling down in a flash. And my, the reason I'm here tonight, because I really didn't feel like being here, but the reason is I feel like I need to bring up the, this hazard as preeminent to any project, of course, improvement. Didn't use it to address? Because I'm worried for my health and the life of my eight-year-old daughter, because at any moment in time during one of these storms, these 100-foot-plus trees, and I love the course, and I love, I've lived there 41 years, between a couple of different houses on the block, and I think that the commission here needs to put that forward as far as it's conditioned upon any improvement project, that that should be addressed primarily because it seems like it's been not... In the city of Daly City, on Daly Boulevard, recently in the last year, we've somewhere had the importance of removing the trees along the walkway because they're readily traveled passage for the safety of the people traversing and the drivers up and down the street. Just the same, that should be addressed at this, and any improvement project on the course.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. 33 Garden Lane, Nora or Noreen?
Thank you very much for taking time to listen to us.
Welcome.
I'm business person, so by me, by definition, I pro-business all the time. However, I'm also a new family coming to this neighborhood, just like that gentleman talked about. So we have this house about three years now. I have personally seen three balls in my backyard. The fence from my backyard to their fence is about 30 feet. I personally see three balls in the first year I got here. And I, so like, I sat there, I say, we have shared fence with the golf course. They never do anything about it. The tree over growing to my side driveway, no one bothers. I do it. I pay my gardener to cut their trees. I think that speaks how business runs over there, and definitely that's not my business to run like that. Secondly, I was like my neighbor, Matt, and Richard's here too. We're neighbors next to each other, okay? I wasn't prepared to speak. I was thinking, this is like my, remodeling my home, and then I invite 600 square feet of neighbors to come to my home to review my plan, the big ones, and give me comments before my planning staff telling me, we recommend you to prove it. I think this is something wrong here in terms of process, how we can prove things that without hearing all the neighbors talking about this. Thirdly, we're not part of Daly City. We're Broadmore, which is Sumatia County. Okay, Sumatia County. So I think this plan should be reviewed by Sumatia County Planning as well, parallally.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate something my fellow commissioners said at the beginning. Things can, kind of, there's a whole process. When anyone, and many of you might have done this in your life, you go to the city, you go through the process, they, that's their job to go through and look at plans, and then it moves forward. So they can recommend or not recommend, but it doesn't give, it doesn't tell us what to do. You know what I'm saying? So it's important that you came, that you're here, and that we're listening to you. So the last person I'd like to invite is Tim Dorm, and I'm sorry if I said you...
I live at 118 Garden Lane.
Thank you, 118.
Yeah, I've lived there for 58 years.
Welcome.
My whole life, pretty much. If you've been to any driving range, you see errant golf balls. There's, you go out to Harding, you see all kinds of golf balls off to the side. I live, you look in there, probably right in range where any of these errant golf balls would come flying over the fence. And with the new equipment now people use, those nets are, they're not going to stop these balls. Okay, I've already had one ball go through my window, and this was years ago, I called Lake Mercedes, went up there with the titleist, they told me it's my fault. You know, I have to cover it, they're not liable for that. But that's minor. I got three kids, I don't need one of them to get hit in the head with a golf ball. Someone's going to die on Garden Lane, and you guys are going to be liable for it. That's all I want to say. Do not pass this monstrosity, we don't need it.
I'd like to thank every one of you for coming up and speaking today, and I can speak for all of us, we appreciate your time and effort, okay?
Amen to that.
Okay, so...
Can I have some quick questions, just for clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
Michael, how many houses will be impacted by this project, approximately?
Don't know exactly, I mean, we could count them real quick. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, when we say impacted, I mean, immediately adjacent, there's, we're just doing a quick count. Yeah, we're looking at, just adjacent, probably 45 or so. Yeah, yeah, it's, there's a number of houses that are directly adjacent to the course, and then across the street, I mean, it depends on what, you know, what we mean by impacted, I mean, who will see the net? I mean, across the street probably will as well, I mean, it's...
Another hypothetical question, Your Honor, is don't you think that the net is more of a preventative, that the balls will go into their house?
Well, it is a preventative measure because they're moving the driving range, of course. The golf course has no interest in errant balls hitting, just, you know, I think everybody would agree on that, so it is preventative. It sounds like it's a question of, you know, the visual impact, there seems to be question about, you know, whether the net will actually stop the balls, this sort of thing.
Okay. Okay.
The bolts fall. There's concerns about.
Right. So, at this time, I'm sorry, I'm new to this, so I'm gonna try to follow the rules, okay? So, at this time, we're gonna close the public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, in a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'd like to ask a question, and it would be to Lake Merced. I understand the process where thinking that moving it over and then giving you a longer stretch would give what you were looking for. And some of the people here seem to ask this question, and since I don't know your course very well, I think it's beautiful and I admire it all the time. Would there be a way to take this, what you'd like to do here, and move it away to a different part? I mean, I don't know your golf course well enough. Would you mind?
Configuration.
Coming up? Yeah, thanks.
We have actually looked at this and didn't find any other place on the course where we thought it would actually work. The driving range.
Sorry, guys. We'd like, oh, yeah, we're trying, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, okay. Please proceed.
The driving range to be workable in a golf course environment needs to be in proximity to the clubhouse and the tees where people actually begin to play a round of golf. So, moving it to the far side of the golf course, well away from the clubhouse, makes it inaccessible to golfers who wanna play a round of golf.
Okay. And my next, I guess another question, and I do see that you do have trees and such, so this may not work, but I mean, so moving it towards the homes gave you better than moving it more to the right? I mean, in this picture, towards, to the left. That would mean you'd have to move everything else, is that correct? Is that kinda wide and go that way?
If we moved it to the right, we would basically have to redesign the center part of the course because it would overlap multiple holes on the golf course. And we, the cost and the difficulty of actually reconfiguring the entire golf course, if we did that, would be prohibitive. So, if we wanted to accomplish this result, the only place we could really do it was here.
I understand. And when you were speaking to engineers and such, did they not have concerns about the high-power voltage wires?
We talked to the engineers, we have been talking to one of the leading golf course netting construction companies in the country. They gave us assurance that their studies, that they would study the wind patterns and engineer these poles in a way that would meet what they believed the tolerances were required to make them completely safe, and in a way that would satisfy the building codes. So, we've relied on input from structural engineers and the people who construct this to give us comfort that these would be safe, and we've concluded based upon that assurance and the fact that they need to comply with the building permit, that they would in fact be safe. And there are no lights here. Someone mentioned the fact that there would be lights shining on the surrounding area. There are no lights on these poles or on the driving range at all.
And the company that you, I'm just curious, hearing that Harding's poles fell down, they're not the same people you're dealing with?
They aren't. From what we understand about the Harding poles, the poles were at least 30 years old. I can't tell you what the building codes were when the poles were put in 30 years ago. I have an unpracticed eye when it comes to looking at the poles. The poles that we are talking to our people about installing are tapered. They're bigger on the bottom and they taper up to the top, providing more stability on the ground. The poles that fell over at Harding are, were tubular, were not tapered. I have no idea what that means, but they were 30 years old, subject to whatever happens over the course of 30 years. Ours, I believe, are engineered to current safety standards, and our engineer has given us assurance that they would be safe.
And there was mention of use of older poles, those older poles, what age, how old are they?
We, they are probably, by the way, we have not decided to use older poles yet.
Okay.
But if they were safe, and they'd have to pass the safety test of our structural engineer, those poles could be 15 to 20 years old. We would not use them if there was any risk that they would not be safe. We simply talked about that as an alternative, but we, in terms of bidding out the project, we have bitted out on the assumption that we're gonna have new poles everywhere. There was a chance that if we could use the old poles, we would, but we wouldn't if there was any question about their safety.
Commissioner Satori, you had a question?
Sir, I'd like to ask just a paradoxical question. Can we have the tournament, PGA tournament or whatever tournament you're going to have, without building the net or poles in the area? Just, you can just improve the area without putting up the net or the poles? Is that a possibility?
It, you mean, could we move the driving range and not have nets?
Yes.
Is that the question?
If it is a possibility.
Could be too close.
I don't think we would want to do that because it would simply expose everybody on the golf course, no matter where they were, and the adjoining houses, to risk of errant golf balls. The nets are there for the purpose of keeping golf balls from going outside of the range. If they weren't there, then I think it would not be a risk that we as a club would be willing to expose anybody to.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Your Honor?
No questions, right? I have no questions, sorry. No questions at all, Mr. President.
One more thing.
Okay.
Your property is up to where, that you're going to build up these poles, right? Property. Because if you're a property owner, you can build a fence, right? You can build a wall if you want to, but you want to protect also your players and at the same time protect also the homeowners, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So, this is a co-op of, a mixture of who should be, what shouldn't be done or not. But because for the delectation of all the residents here, I think there should be some sort of compromise. We cannot say no, we cannot say yes, just for the sake of, you know, for business, at the same time for the protection also of the people, at the same time for the beauty of the surroundings. I don't know how it will come out without building up the poles or, if you want, really, if it is a driving range, normally hit the ball right here, and then the ball comes, but you don't build the whole thing to put up nets, right? You can just put up a net somewhere along.
I mean.
To the left.
Yeah, well, we, you do need nets along the left-hand side.
Yeah, but it seems that all area will be built, the net, to the south of Lake Merced.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure I understand.
There should be, it looks like there'll be a long line of net poles in that area.
There will be along the south side, that's right.
I'm sorry.
That's why I hope there can be a compromise on this.
Sixty foot.
And kinda, I'm trying to follow, I think I got what he's saying, but I had a question. So, currently, you have a netting. You already have a net up, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, but this net currently is how many feet high? Current one?
It's, I think roughly 75.
Okay.
It's not in this location.
No, no, no.
It's in line.
Right, right, right. It's in more, it's towards, yeah, I'm understanding that, that it's not in the same location, it's 100 and how many feet?
It's about 75 feet.
No, meaning where it's at now to where you wanna put it is how many feet?
It's roughly, I think, I haven't gone out and pasted off, but it's roughly 50 to 60 yards.
50 to 60 yards, which is 150 feet.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so we're moving it south 150 feet.
And somebody, okay, so 150, 200 feet, you're wanting to move it. And when that happens, two things happen. One, you're trying to make it longer.
Yes, correct.
And two, you're gonna make that, where it goes from 75 to double height, correct? And when it goes double height, I'm guessing you need more poles and bigger poles to hold something that tall.
Yeah, the poles are wider at the base.
Wider at the bottom and tapered at the top, correct.
And tapered at the top, that's correct.
Not that much. No. It's not like they're apparent.
Yeah, I.
Misrepresented.
So, one second, guys, I'm, yeah, somehow there's a rule that we have, we've already closed the discussion on the outside, so I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I have to stop it. Yeah, we're discussing this with, with Mr. Perro. So, and so, again, you have the opportunity, it fell through, but your golf club decided that you would follow through on this in case it brings another PGA tour your way.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And, you know, I will tell you that my personal concern in listening to everything now is that the power, power lines are right there. And as much as, there's not 100% guarantee that something doesn't fall, and that's pretty darn close to someone's home.
Here, here.
I'm, no, I'm not.
No.
Ma'am, there is one question you're not asking.
No.
Well, I can't, I can't.
Thank you.
I can't, I can't, and we're not, I can't. If, we're missing, so we're just, we're gonna have dialogue. So, number, so the biggest concern in, for me here, sitting here, is the power lines, okay? And not having 100%, nothing's 100%, not having 100% a guarantee that for some crazy reason, a pole falls and that pole goes into someone's space with the wires and such. That, I'm just giving you in the conversation that I'm hearing. Is there any, I really need some support here from you guys.
I'd like to ask him a question, if I might.
Please, please do.
If you can, sir, I'd appreciate you to give me a compelling reason to vote for this proposal when it will benefit Lake Merced five days a year, and yet these people have to spend 365 days a year living the discomfort in their backyard. I'd like you to give me a compelling reason.
Well, instead of giving you a compelling reason, it depends on which side of this issue you stand, on whether reasons are compelling or not. But let me just say this, I'm a man of conscience. The people at Lake Merced are people of conscience. We wanna be good neighbors to the community in which we reside. We are not here to ram something down the throats of our neighbors that feel as strongly as these people do about the impact on their daily lives. This has been eye-opening to me. I'm the president of the club, but it is a democracy there. I can't make decisions on my own. But one thing I can tell you is that I'm moved by what I've heard tonight. My integrity has been challenged by some people in this audience, and I want those people to understand that I'm not here to do something to hurt anybody in this room. In fact, if it appears that it will hurt you in this room, I'll go back to the drawing board and look at this again.
Yay!
I agree with you, sir. I think there's certain people in here that, in the way they spoke tonight, that they did their neighbors a disservice and could have turned this board very much against them.
Why not ask the PGE to put it underground? Why not have PGE put the lines underground?
They're bankrupt.
Yeah. Do you want it to continue, sir?
That's all I.
Is there any other questions?
No, I have nothing for her.
No, to me, there should be a compromise here because I know you're doing it with a point of business, business point of view, and at the same time, the community is also deserving to be protected.
We wanna do what's right for our neighbors, but we wanna do what's right for the golf club and for the community, and we will look for other ways to accommodate the concerns of everyone in this room tonight and of the panel as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you, sir. So, at this time, we'd like to table this.
Yes, that was, I'm gonna say table.
Yeah, so do we have a vote to table this? I'd like to make a motion.
No, me.
You'd like to make a motion?
I move that to table this until further notice that we have all the datas, all the ideas that can come from both sides. And if possible, the president of Lake Merced can make a position paper on this, and also the homeowners can make their own. So, this is a wheeling of this market of ideas.
And a better video.
Thank you very much.
I.
Let us not make any name-calling here, at least on that.
Yeah.
I second Commissioner Satori's motion, and I would encourage both sides to get together and see what they can do to compromise and come back to us at a future date.
Yes, and so, yeah, I just wanna clarify, 'cause I hear questions that I'm, so we're tabling it, which means there's gonna be more discussion, more planning, more discussion with Lake Merced and the neighborhood so that hopefully all of you can come to a compromise, and that's what's happening at this moment, okay? So, we're going to, we voted? We're gonna vote?
We're gonna vote.
Okay, we had a motion, let's vote.
Vote.
Crump? The motions.
The motion's, yeah.
Okay. Pacheco?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Prohany?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening. So, so at this point, let's see here, where am I? Okay, public appearances, staff communication.
You're in the chair, I see.
I'm telling you. What, okay, acquisition, okay. So, I guess at this time, we can adjourn?
I just wanted to make one communication.
Sure, please.
Just a reminder to the Planning Commission that there will be a Brown Act training at City Hall from 10 to 12 on Saturday. It's in the training room downstairs, so you are all invited to attend. I believe you received an email to this effect.
That means I can stay up late on Friday night and take a two-hour nap.
Very good. So, at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three.